If you desire to address the City Council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak form available at the entrance and present it to the city clerk. Speakers will be called upon at the appropriate time. This time, I will call to order the City Council and successor agency of the City of Grand Terrace for May 23, 2017. Our invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Rick Doucette from the Brooke Church, and immediately following that, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Bill Hussey. If you would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge you tonight as we just take this moment to pause before you and acknowledge who you are, that you are the great God, Almighty God, Creator God, who is good and merciful and just in all that you do. And Lord, we believe today that, as in every day, Lord, that we need your help and we need your wisdom. And so, God, we just take this moment to ask you, God, not only do we acknowledge you, but we ask for your help. We ask for your wisdom. And I pray for those who are making decisions and making plans that affect people's lives today and in the future, Lord, that you would give great wisdom and great discernment and great sensitivity. And Lord, that all that is accomplished here today would not only do what is best for the city and best for our community, but most of all, that would glorify you. And so, Lord, we look to you, pray, God, that you would show yourself strong and powerful in this meeting and accomplish all that you have desired and that your will would be done. And we thank you and pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. (Inhales) For the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor Rick. Thank Councilmember Hussey. Before I go to roll call, I would like to announce and welcome Public Works Director Alan French. He's been with us for a few months now, but I think we can formally welcome him at this time. And I also would like to welcome our new city clerk, Deborah Thomas. You've done a very good job so far. And if you would please give a roll call at this time.
Councilmember Reiners.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Protem Robles.
Present.
Mayor McNamara.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have no special presentations tonight, so we'll move to consent calendar. The consent calendar items are expected to be routine and controversial, excuse me, routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by City Council at one time without any discussion. So any council member, staff member, or citizen may request an item be removed for review. Are there any items that we need to review or we need to remove tonight?
Madam Mayor, may I interrupt for just a moment? With respect to the minutes from February 28, there were some minor changes made to that. It was just a content review initially, but with a secondary review. I went ahead and placed the minutes on your desk and highlighted in yellow the items that were changed.
Okay. Has Council had a chance to review those minutes? the minutes from regular meeting February 28, 2017 as corrected.
I'd like to make a motion on the consent calendar, approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Reiners, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, and Mayor McNamara voting yes.
Thank you. We'll move to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to comment on items not occurring on our agenda. Is there anybody that wishes to speak tonight? All right. Seeing no takers, I will close public comment and bring it back to Council for their communications, beginning with Councilmember Brian Reiners.
Thank you, Mayor. We met here last week, and the city manager had a survey that he distributed. And I thought that was a really good idea, and we have another one of those this Thursday, the 25th. So those of you who are here, let everybody that you know in your neighborhood and in your families, because the more numbers we get, the better the idea we have of what it is that the residents of Grand Terrace actually see as priorities for the new budget cycle. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say I want to thank you for coming out tonight. I feel it's here for the stakeholders, shareholders meeting with Councilmember Reiners. And it'd be nice, you know, if you do come out, and we want to hear your voice, your opinion. This is your city, so this Thursday, like you said. Also, I want to thank the volunteers who made it possible, and the city staff, for the pet clinic, for the shots and getting your dog licensed. And thank you for all the responsible pet owners making sure that their dog has a city license. And also, I'd like to have my thoughts and prayers for the latest terrorist attack on Manchester, England. And Mayor, I'd like to dedicate our council meeting for the victims of the attack.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilson.
I want to add one item, actually, Mayor. Thank you. Last Friday night, I had an opportunity to attend a League of Cities event. And it was, although, of course, the business part of it was not all that entertaining, I did have an opportunity to watch a presentation at the Lewis Playhouse, thank the Lewises for hosting the situation. And of course, you know, I'm an old guy, so the '60s music is the only thing I really understand anyway. And it was a marvelous opportunity. Really enjoyed the company of my fellow council members. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Protem Robles.
Thank you, Mayor. On May 10, I went to the Grand Terrace High School Stadium. They had an event that students with a GPA of 3.0 and higher, and 97% attendance, had an opportunity to win a number of prizes, including a car from Rotello Chevrolet. So a nice thank you to Rotello Chevrolet for that. On May 11, I attended Ametran's Administrative Finance Board Meeting, and there's no reportable action there. The 17th, I was invited by the mayor of San Bernardino to attend a World Trade Conference at the old Air Force Base. And I have to say, I was very skeptical about the Air Force Base. But it was a fascinating conference. There was trade partners there from all over the world, and some Washington staff. It was fascinating to listen to the Trade Minister from Mexico talk about their openness to renegotiating NAFTA with the United States and being concerned about the timing, because in January, they enter into a presidential election, and the Congress will not be able to get anything done. They talked about that the trade integration is very good, that for every dollar of something produced from Mexico, it has 40 cents of parts from the United States. And they said China and Japan, there's zero. He brought an interesting example of trade. He says aluminum comes from Tennessee, goes to the international airport, and is sent to Tecate, Mexico, where it's made into aluminum cans for beer, and is brought back and consumed here. And I misworded, but they also harvest the scrap. So it was interesting. The trade representative from the current administration said that the time has finally come for the M and empire on trade, that this is really going to be a hot area. She talked about two executive orders that Trump signed on the trade partner relationships. The first one was to review all existing trade agreements, and the second was to set up an office in trade and manufacturing. And unfortunately, we don't seem to get in the news anything about this, so I thought I'd share a little bit about it. But it was fascinating. Mine and Harold's school, public administration was there. The students have been very helpful actually getting global partners for local businesses. Fascinating. Really a fascinating thing. And I also attended the City PAC League of Cities event. And I never thought in my life, when the Beatles came out when I was 13 years old, that I'd be sitting in a room full of gray-haired people listening to The Beatles, and everybody'd be rocking their heads. It was very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On May 10, I went to the General Policy Committee for SBCTA. We just had some high-level administrative matters, such as the Executive Director's Review. We received March and April procurement report, received and filed a budget to actual report for third quarter ending March 31. We also recommended that the board approve the financial policies amendments that were suggested by staff. We recommend board approve fiscal year 2016-17 budget amendment increases. And that was looking at Measure I pass-throughs in transit allocations for Valley Senior and Disabled Program. That would be a funding increase that is anticipated through Measure I sales tax revenue increases. We recommend that the board approve and authorize the Executive Director to approve an amendment to an agreement with the City of San Bernardino regarding the property and facility management services for the San Bernardino Santa Fe Depot and Transit Center. And what they were noticing is that the areas where the City of San Bernardino was in charge of the management of the whole depot and the transit area was being run differently than where Sandbag was in charge. And so, the riders of the different public transportation in the different areas were receiving different levels of service. And so, what Sandbag, or what SBCTA is proposing is that they take over the maintenance and the running of all of it, and then they just have a bill to City of San Bernardino for their portion of it. That way, there's a uniform communication of how employees are to carry out policies and procedures. We also recommended the board approve sole source agreement with Bernard Arroyo for a contract for technical consulting services for freeway service patrol program. And that is for the way that they dispatch the tow trucks that you see up and down the I-10 corridor and parts of 215 to help stranded motorists. We received information relating to the procurement for development of online software system for the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority van pool program. Apparently, it's such a specialized program that they needed to have software specifically made for that program. We also received information pertaining to the San Bernardino Regional Energy Partnership. This is a savings program for cities that do not have city-owned utilities. So it would be working with Edison and the gas company. It's something that I'm hoping perhaps our city can look into to see if it's an opportunity for us to save on utilities. We recommended the board acting as the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority approved funding agreements for open streets events in the cities of Rialto and Rancho Cucamonga. I'm wondering, as we get into some of our active transportation projects and they're finished, we might at some point consider having an open street event here in the city. And that's really to encourage people to get out and walk and bike and leave their cars at home for the day. And we also recommended that the board receive the 2017 state and federal legislation update. That was a watch of legislation that is pertinent to the building and the transportation in this area. On May 12, the council, my colleagues, and some of the staff got together, it was a Saturday morning, and we looked at the 2030 vision, and we talked about ways that it could be updated or enhanced, or perhaps even just continue on with how it was written. So I thank city staff for their work in setting up the workshop and their time and attendance. And I also thank my colleagues. I thank Captain Hector Gomez and Lieutenant Doug Wolfe for their attendance there as well. They had a really good opportunity to participate when we talked about the safety and levels of service from our sheriff contract. On May 12, I have the honor of attending an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for James McGivern Jr. It was a really interesting ceremony. They really have a really nice way of presenting to a young man who has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout, which very few who start within the Boy Scouts actually end up achieving their Eagle Scout rank, which is really interesting because I see a lot of our scout troops from Troop 40 here seem to achieve that rank. So I have to believe that we just have an extraordinary bunch of young men in this community. And I had the honor of delivering for the entire council and the city the commendation that we all signed for them. And that was a really nice evening. May 23, which was last night, I attended a retirement for Jimmy Totozzi in a Burt Tech waste. He has been our connection to Burt Tech and their services here in the city. And so, there were a number of people that came out to wish him well in his retirement. I think that'll take place actually in the next couple of months. And then, just don't want to forget about Budget in the Park last Wednesday night. Thank you to staff for putting that together. I know we had a few of our residents come out, but I think it was very well done. And hopefully, you'll have stakeholder meeting that will be more attended. So with that, I will move on to public hearings, of which I believe we have one. And so, to speak on public hearing items, we will have you fill out a request to speak form and give it to the city clerk. Each person will be allowed three minutes to address the City Council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in the notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So we will follow this format. We will have the public hearing open. We will ask about any written communications. We will have City Council have questions of staff. If there's an applicant in this case, we would have them comment, and they would not be limited to three minutes. We will have arguments in favor or opposition. Those speakers will be limited to three minutes. The applicant will have a chance to rebut any of the speakers in opposition. And then, our public hearing will be closed. City Council will then go into deliberation. So at this time, the public hearing is open. Is there any written correspondence on this item? We are looking at the temporary moratorium on the expansion or establishment of outdoor storage and/or outdoor manufacturing uses. And I don't have any written correspondence in front of me. So may we please have the staff report, Director Molina?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As indicated by the mayor, this is an item for temporary moratorium on outdoor uses or outdoor manufacturing uses. And our recommendation this evening is for the council to adopt this interim urgency ordinance, so that during the time of this urgency ordinance, the establishment or expansion of outdoor storage uses or outdoor manufacturing uses in certain zone districts would be restricted from establishing or operating, excuse me, or expanding until we study this matter. And as indicated in the staff report, it's only certain land uses. And this is a portion of our existing zoning map. This outer boundary here is roughly Mount Vernon Avenue. And so, we're talking about the industrial zone districts, the M2 zone districts, the restricted manufacturing zone districts, and also the CM, commercial manufacturing zone districts. These districts allow, they allow outdoor, you know, construction storage yards, or they allow manufacturing, light manufacturing, medium, or heavy. But the zoning code doesn't have an explanation or a more definitive definition of what those type of uses mean. And the staff has been receiving a number of inquiries for these outdoor uses, contractor storage yards with, you know, construction equipment, materials, tractor trailer storage. We had an inquiry of user stores, outdoor stores, different types of components that make up asphalt material. They mix them, and they package them, and that's the type of use that was being proposed in our M2 zone district. We also had inquiries in the past for outdoor storage of shipped materials, so we would just have these stockpiles of these materials, and then the vehicles would pick them up. And we're kind of concerned with the level of inquiries we've been getting in light of our zoning code. And having these discussions with the different people that have been inquiring about these uses, or with realtors that are trying to find places for these type of uses, quite frankly, they're saying other cities, such as Montana, are prohibiting these type of uses and not allowing them anymore. So they're trying to find places, and we have land that potentially is available to accommodate the use with respect to land space. And so, I think that's why we're also seeing uptick in these type of inquiries. And so, we wanted to have an opportunity to study these type of uses, you know, look at our zoning code, provide definitions that have more clarity, that have more of a discussion about what constitutes light, what constitutes medium. We also want to have the opportunity to establish regulations to mitigate the potential for impacts such as noise, or traffic, or air quality. And then also, to ensure consistency with our general plan, because our general plan does speak to light industry, and uses that don't have a lot of traffic, don't have a lot of air emissions, don't have a lot of noise, and that, you know, can work and integrate with adjacent land uses. And so, our general plan does speak to that. Our zoning code doesn't speak to that quite just yet. And so, we wanted to have the council consider this interim ordinance to allow us to do that. And so, we would do that through this process. What, the temporary moratorium is valid for 45 days, and within that timeline, we come back to the council with the report as far as what needs to be changed in our timeline for doing that. And so, what I would request that the council do is consider this item, but accept staff's recommendation to adopt an interim urgency ordinance. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. If there's any questions that the council may have, I'd be happy to respond.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Molina. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Okay. Hearing done. Are there any requests to speak on this item? I believe we have one request to speak. Please state your name for the record.
For the record, Dr. McCall, 21758 Longwood Avenue. Listening to Director Molina, she basically, and this is general terminology with a broad stroke, so I'm glad you're going to at least go over the details of it. We had a meeting, the neighborhood, the 40 Acres, had a meeting upstairs last night, and this topic was brought up, actually. And I've thought about it since then. And some things I totally understand, and I've seen it, having been a contractor for 30 years, and now that I'm attempting to become a farmer one day soon, outdoor storage, would that, does that include a mulch pile? That seems my famous compost pile. Is that outdoor storage and farm equipment, where it's just part of the modus operandi of a farm or a ranch-style living? On the other hand, I've seen places where the construction yards store pallets, and the rats, mice, and other critters run amok like crazy. So, and fires, too. I've been, when I first came to California, actually, I was a yard boy for a construction company down in Frog Town. And sometimes, parts of it turned into just a dumping ground, a temporary trash pile until we could do whatever we did with it. So I'm glad you're doing this, and I hope that some of us are able to attend the details of what you consider just outdoor storage of anything. Some things are definitely health hazard, fire hazard, et cetera. So I approve, applaud that you're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Are there any other speakers at this time? Are there any other speakers at this time? Director Molina, do you have anything else that you would like to add?
I do not, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to council for deliberation on this item. Does it need deliberation? It says read only. Read by title only? Oh, so we want to adopt the interim emergency ordinance. Any comments or deliberations or motions?
I will make the motion to read by title only, waive further reading, and adopt an interim urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, adopted pursuant to Government Code Section 65858, temporarily prohibiting the establishment or expansion of outdoor storage and outdoor manufacturing uses in the commercial, manufacturing, restricted manufacturing, and industrial zone districts.
Is there somebody that would like to make a second?
Second.
Click vote.
Councilmember Reinars, councilmember Hussey, councilmember Wilson, all vote yes. Mayor Pro Tem Robles votes yes. Mayor McNabb votes yes.
Thank you. We'll move to item eight of unfinished business, resolution amending the engineering fee schedule to include and establish a revocable encroachment permit application filing fee. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers. Alan French, Director Public Works. This item number eight before you is a resolution codifying the engineering fee schedule as it pertains to the encroachment permit. This item supports the 2030 goal number one of ensuring fiscal viability and goal number two, to maintain public safety. In January of 2015, the council adopted a resolution to update and revise the planning, building, safety, and engineering fees so that the charges, the fees charged were appropriate to recover any of the staff costs to not adversely impact the general fund. On April 25th, 2017, earlier this year, the council updated the wording of the municipal code to allow the revocable encroachment permits. Along those same lines, this resolution establishes a fee of $482.25 for the review and issuance of the revocable encroachment permit. The diagram on the screen is a quick overview of how the process would work. An applicant would come in with a regular encroachment permit. Staff at that time would determine if it's a regular encroachment permit, which would be any structure outside or a legal structure within the road right of way. And then if there were any issues, or other than flatwork, grass, low bushes, then at that point, it would not be a regular encroachment permit, but the revocable encroachment permit. At that time, we would notify the applicant that the revocable encroachment permit process would need to be followed, and the additional fee, this $482, would be required at that time. Once that is paid and the additional information received, then staff could continue the review This is the fee schedule for the regular permits, and it's a processing fee of $58 plus, depending on what the improvements are proposed, and that's based on either linear footage or square footage of the improvement. This was just a photo of an encroachment. This is the process that we go through for the revocable permit process, and part of that, you can see it's much more intense than a regular encroachment permit. And that time...
Can you really read that, Director? French?
It is, no question, but yeah. I tried to get it as big as I could on the screen. I thought it would be more readable. Unfortunately, it is a lot of text.
I couldn't really see your fee schedule either.
Okay. Oh, yes, I pulled that right out of our documentation that's posted on the internet. So, I'm sorry about the legibility of that, but it is online, available to the applicants. So, these are the items, the tasks, if you would, that would need to be done for the revocable encroachment permit. Moving forward to, this would be the slide after the example diagram, here shows the exact tasks that staff would need to be done, and it gives timelines that we estimate it'd take to do each of the tasks. And adding those tasks up toward the bottom, you can see the total time tallied to be about three hours and 45 minutes. With that, we multiply that by the total burden rate for a position of a permit technician, which we envision doing all, if not majority, of this work, times the burden rate to come up with the $482.25. Once these tasks are done, and the permit would be issued at that time, and we're confident that all the staff time would be recouped for that fee. So at this time, we're recommending that the council adopt the fee for the revocable encroachment permit. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone should have.
Thank you. Does council have questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Reinars.
How do you calculate a burden rate?
It's, that's a rate that's set already, and it's the overhead and benefits associated with that position. So, let's see if I can go to, for our fee schedule, you can, sorry again for the clarity, but about in the middle of the column, in the middle of the page, there's a permit technician, and the rate is about $70 per hour. So that would be the direct labor. The burden rate is in addition to that, the overhead and the benefits on top of that. It's a multiplier that you apply to that rate to get the overhead and benefit rate, which is the burdened rate. So once we use that, then that's, again, we're trying to capture all the costs for processing the permit.
And sir, if I might, because what would really happen with that burden rate is it's...
Mr. Duffy?
I'm sorry. The full cost, basically, the lights, the cars, everything, it's a full burden cost to ensure that we have, we have an actual rate for every employee here that includes the salary plus benefits plus all the operational costs. So what Miss Fortune would most likely do when she was finance director, is she would look at all of our expenses, electricity, everything, fuel, and that would be part of the overhead rate. So you'd take the salary, and you have the overhead rate, you add it on top, and then you break that out into hourly rate to make sure that you fully recover the cost for the program.
Thank you.
I have a follow-on question to that. The $70 is not what the technician makes per hour, though, correct?
That's correct.
So what goes into that $70?
So the $70, normally, it's the hourly rate, and you multiply that by 60% for the benefits.
Okay.
And then you add...
And so for the burdened rate, we're adding overhead and benefits again?
So...
It sounded to me like we were doubling up on some of these.
Yeah, so we actually, we take the salary, then we add the benefits, and then on top of that, we put in the overhead cost.
So the overhead is the difference between the 70 and whatever this is, 128?
Yeah, that's the full burden rate, absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff at this time? Mayor Pro Tem?
Before I forget, I'm pretty sure everybody's over 40, so could we try to move to at least a 10-point font for this?
Okay.
All right. Any other questions of staff at this time on this item? All right, seeing no questions, I will open up public comment. Is there anybody here tonight who would like to comment on this item? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'll move adoption of a resolution of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, codifying the engineering fee schedule as it pertains to the revocable encroachment permits.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes with councilmembers Hussey, I'm sorry, councilmember Hussey voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNabb voting yes, councilmembers Reinars and Wilson voting no.
All right, thank you. We will move forward to item nine, which is the 2017-18 revised budget schedule. May we have staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers Cynthia Fortune from the city manager's office. This staff report supports city goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability through the continuous monitoring of revenue receipts and expenditure disbursements against approved budget appropriations. On February 28th, staff presented the mid-year budget review for fiscal year 1617, and included in that review, we submitted a proposed schedule, which you find on packet page 98. Before you tonight for review and approval, we're submitting a revised schedule due to staff reorganization, filling of positions, and some that are still vacant. What I'd like to highlight is at this point, for us to introduce the budget, we are requesting the city council hold a special meeting on May 30th, that would be on Tuesday of next week, so that we could submit the proposed budget, continue with the June regular meetings, and the other special meeting, which I highlighted in the bottom, which is June 20th, need not be approved today. That is if and only if council fears they would need additional budget deliberations. So that concludes my report. If city council would like to review the schedule, and let us know.
Questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Hussey.
Is the meeting going to be at 6 o'clock? Is that what the time, or did I miss something?
That is correct.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I'll open up for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to comment at this time? All right, seeing no takers, I'll bring it back to council for further discussion and consideration of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised fiscal year 2017-18 budget schedule.
I'll second. Motion passes with councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Pro Tem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNabb voting yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move to item 10, which is the professional services agreement for the obligation of Highway Safety Improvement Program grant. May we have staff report, please?
Evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers Alan French, Public Works Director. This item before you is for approval of a professional service agreement for obligation of the Highway Safety Improvement Program grant. This follows the 2030 vision statement. Goal number one, ensuring our fiscal viability, and goal number two, maintaining public safety. The Highway Safety Improvement Program is codified as section 148 of Title 23 of the United States Code, which is one of the core federal aid programs for new surface transportation projects, and which passed into law in December 2015. The city of Grand Terrace used the services of Evan Brooks to assist with the award of application and application of the grant for that program. Earlier in the 2015-16 year, the grants were released and we submitted with the help of Evan Brooks and Associates. We were awarded the grant for the full cost of the project, which was a $435,000 grant. In between that time, services for the consultant were done in one year, and were not impacting the following fiscal year. But in that following fiscal year, we did enter into agreements with Evan Brooks for other projects, including the Blue Mountain Trailhead, Urban Greening Grant, as well as the HSIP grant. After award, we need to do the next step, which is obligation, and that's what I'm asking, staff is asking for approval of that contract. Even though it appears that we're continuing to use Evan Brooks, this is why we're coming to the council, even though the contract amount is below the threshold for the city We plan on using the maintenance of efforts funds to pay for the grant work and to cover the city share of the portion required from the Measure I funds. At this time, we're asking for approval of the professional services agreement for Evan Brooks. Happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time.
Mayor Protem?
This might be for Cynthia. We don't use the accrual process, for example, I mean, in the last fiscal year, it was in August 2016, but the work was billed. So, we don't use a modified accrual system here in the city?
I'm sorry, Mayor Protem. Yes, we normally do up to 60 days. But I believe they invoiced us in August, and that should have been accrued through the prior year. However, the backup was not provided till after September, and our auditors are very, very conscious of the deadlines, and they don't like us adjusting those. So, it ended up, yes, two in one fiscal year.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll open it up to public comments. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no takers, I will bring it back to council for further deliberation and consideration of a motion.
I just have a question for the city manager.
Mayor Protem?
What is the current threshold for city managers in our area?
Well, it could range from smaller cities to large cities. I've seen, like, for example, when I worked for the city of Sacramento, it was $100,000 for the city manager. When I worked for the city of Compton, it was $25,000. And then they reduced it to $5,000, and they increased it to $25,000. It ranges. And so, but the $10,000 threshold that you have right now, it is a reasonable number to get something done. You just don't want to have to, and lower, it becomes, everything comes to the council for little things. So, if I might add, the, answering your question, I believe, is because we have grants that pop up for the short window, one of the things that we're going to be doing in the new fiscal year is that we're going to do an RFQ for grant writers. And then we're going to come in, in the budget, we're going to ask the council to allocate $50,000 for, for grants. And we'll have a list of people that are qualified RFQ. So, if we run across a grant with a short timeline, we would be able to apply for that without having to continue to come back to the council, or able to apply, engage the consultant, and then come to the council with, with the application versus the other way around. It's a long time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there someone that would like to make a motion?
I will make the motion. I'm in the mood to read tonight. One, to approve a professional services agreement to be prepared by the City Attorney's Office between the City of Grand Terrace and Evan Brooks Associates for the preparation of obligation application and related documents for the HSIP grant program in an amount not to exceed $6,500. Two, authorize the city manager to execute the aforementioned agreement. And three, recognize the total amount of funds paid to Evan Brooks during the 2016-17 fiscal year in the amount of $39,000 to maintain compliance with the city's purchasing policy.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously with councilmembers Reinars, Hussey, Wilson voting yes, Mayor Protem Robles voting yes, Mayor McNabbel voting yes.
All right, thank you. We go to city manager communications.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, my slides. Very briefly. Now, for my slides to appear, I can, I can remind the council and citizens at home that if you have mail, you're not able to get online and get their PIP licensing. That was really good news we dropped last week at the budget hearing. The crowd went crazy. And then we also have, as Councilman Hussey mentioned, and also as Councilman Reinars mentioned, that we have the budget stakeholders meeting. And just a very brief note about that. What we've done is we've contacted the major clubs and organizations in the city, and we've asked them to invite at least three members to come. And the interesting thing about this is that about four months ago, Mayor Protem and I and some staff members went to the Mission Inn to do an engagement, a public engagement, how to get people involved. And part of that process was this electronic voting, an instant, instant voting. So, we use that same system, and I think the public really liked that. They got instant results. And then we posted those results, we send them out to all the recipients of the meeting. And so, we're going to do the same thing again on Thursday. In addition to that, I wanted to talk about safe thoughts to school walking tour. So, we'd like you to join us for our school walking tour. And unfortunately, I'm going to have to admit, as with the Mayor Protem said, I can't read that. So, I have to apologize for that. And the cover that I have right now is too small for me to be able to...
So, I can read the blue, but then much below that, I...
Can you, can you zoom in on that, or are you able to see it there, Sandra?
That was it?
There we go. Okay, great. So, we'd like you to help improve the pedestrian and bicycle routes to our local schools. What they're doing really is, this is a part of the grant that we have, that we're looking at ways to make sure that we have safe routes to school, that we have bike mobility, put them a bike mobility setting. And so, what they're doing is they'll be doing this walking tour at the high, at the elementary school, middle school, I'm sorry, on May 24th, 2017. And they'll meet in front of the gate, and at 7:45, 8:45, people can, can go in. It's actually a really good exercise. It's almost what you talked about earlier, Mayor, in terms of some communities kind of shutting down and creating a bike-friendly community for the day. We'll also be doing something similar to that at the Community Day, and it's going to be happening soon. There'll be lots of information about being coming back in community.
Yes, Madam Mayor, as the council, so our consultant, K T U A, will be at Community Day, and they will have a different flyer that talks about the survey. They'll have the survey available. We'll be doing a bike helmet raffle every 15 minutes or so. But they are starting this process of data gathering and outreach into the community. So, the survey is also going to be available online on our website.
And my last slide is a picture of the Grand Terrace Plaza. This is 22317 Barton Road in Grand Terrace. It's the former Stringfield property slash city of housing success agency property. Right now, CHDFCO is actually in Las Vegas at the largest retail expo in the world at Recon in Las Vegas. And they are shopping this project. And actually, I will be attending that tomorrow. I'll be leaving at about 5 o'clock in the morning to get there. It's a huge event, so I'll be able to go and look up, talk to the retailers, and kind of help talk up the project. And should be back by midnight. And with that, concludes my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We have no closed session tonight. And so, we will adjourn at the request of Councilmember Hussey, in the, in the honor of the victims of the, and the families, in their memory, and in their honor of the Manchester attack. And we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting to be held on Tuesday, June 13th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. Agenda item request must be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office no later than 14 calendar days preceding the meeting. And I hear a discussion going on.
It might be our, it is our recommendation you adjourn this meeting to the 30th.
Okay, even though that's a special meeting?
Yes.
All right. All right, we will adjourn to our special meeting, May 30th, 2017, at 6:00 p.m. But we will not be requesting agenda items for that, because it will be a budget workshop. All right? Thank you very much. Thank you to staff for putting together this meeting, and thank you to my councilmembers for their time and attention. We are adjourned.